...car you pass when you're flying down the road.
All right, it is 7:00 P.M. We're gonna come to order here shortly. I know we'll have to see if we can do some more about seating here, but we'll get to that, so. But it is 7:00 P.M. As soon as Guy comes back up here, and then he's just grabbing an item, we'll get in there. This is the City of Auburnette City Council meeting for Thursday, June 14, 2018. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. I know we have a sizable crowd here. I would ask just a couple things. One, silence any of your devices that you may have to keep order throughout the, and interruptions throughout the meeting. Secondly, this is what we can do for seating here for some of these folks. I think a few of these items will probably get handled, and then I don't think everybody's probably gonna stay for the whole meeting, but you're certainly welcome to, and we'll kinda go from there, so. Anyway, we'll go ahead and call back to order. One thing that we do do here in the City of Auburnette is we start our meetings with the pledge allegiance. The flag is here, but we'll go ahead. We normally have it right there, but with the size of the crowd, we'll just go ahead and stand. I'll lead us in the pledge, and we ask that you also do the same here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice. Thank you. Okay, the city clerk is busy. I'll go ahead and conduct a roll call to establish for the record that we do have a forum. Counselman Menzen?
President.
Counselman Saracen. I am also present. Counselman Trump?
President.
And Josh?
President.
All right. Let the record reflect that we do have a forum to conduct business tonight with a full council. We've all had a opportunity to approve, to the approval of the agenda. I do need to know if we have any amendments to the agenda as presented. Our city clerk is still tied up. Have any amendments to the agenda as presented, do you know, counsel? I have none. Hearing no approvals to the agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Moved by Menzen, seconded by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the motion carries. We do have several public meetings to get through this evening. There are five. We'll get through them as quickly as possible. However, I do know that if the Sheriff's Department does show up the deputy, we normally move them to the top of the agenda to be able to conduct business, so they can get back on the road. All right, there, the first one we have is a public hearing to hear comments and concerns related to an updating of Chapter 28 for the adoption of reference of the International Building Code 2018 Edition, and the International Residential Code 2018 Edition, and providing penalties. Guys, our acting clerk, did you receive any written comments or objections to this public hearing?
No.
The first public hearing? All right, let the record reflect that the public hearing is open. We received no written objections to the public hearing. This is the time and place. If anyone present wishes to make an objection or make a comment on the public hearing, you need to do so. If you wish to do so, please stand up, state your name and address for the record, if you can make any comments or objections. Hearing none from the audience or persons present, I'll refer it now to the members of the council. Comments? Seeing no comments or objections also from the council. Let the record reflect that public hearing was held on this matter. There were no objections from public or council or written objections on the public hearing. For the prior disclosure on that, or I'll close this public hearing at this time. I will need a motion from council to approve the first reading of Chapter 28, adoption of the aforementioned code. That will be placed on the agenda by the acting city clerk at a time designated in the future, probably at the next month, for the first reading. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Trump, moved by Trump?
I just had clarification, so we, because we haven't received that code yet, correct?
The electrical code is booked this thing. It's, we're just adopting the most current code.
Okay.
So we won't actually have it listed, because it's pages and boxes.
But it's what that code is going?
Yes. It's, this is exactly what Robbins has adopted.
My understanding, we're doing this in conjunction with Robbins, which we do mutually aid with for support for their-
Building code, for building inspections.
You have my second.
Seconded by Saracen. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. It's been motion by Trump, seconded by Saracen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the motion carries. We'll move on to the second public hearing. This is a public hearing to hear the comments and concerns related to updating Chapter 42 related to the adoption and reference of the International Mechanical Code 2018 Edition and providing penalties. Again, these are all related, but we do them separately. Again, I ask the clerk to receive any written objections in relation to this public hearing.
No, sir.
All right, when we have this public hearing open at this time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make any statements or objections to this public hearing? Again, state your name, address, clear for the record, and you can make your comments at this time. Hearing none from the persons present, I'll move on to the council. Is there any questions or concerns or objections to this public hearing? Hearing none from the council, we'll go ahead and close out this public hearing. Let the record reflect, the public hearing was held on this matter, and there were no objections. Again, we'll need a motion to approve the first reading, Chapter 42, A, adopting the aforementioned code. Clerk, please also put that on the future agenda for this first reading and process thereof. Moved by Trump, or, I'm sorry, moved by Shans?
Sorry.
Seconded by Menzen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The motion carries. Let the record reflect, public hearing is held on this matter. All right, the third one. A public hearing to hear comments and concerns related to updating Chapter 43A related to the adoption by the reference of the International Plumbing Code 2018 additions provided and penalties. Again, this is a, in the public hearing for, for the plumbing code 2018. Clerk, were there any written objections received? No written objection received. This is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. If there's any persons present that wish to make an objection or comment, it's the time and place to do it. Again, state your name and address, go ahead and address the council. Hearing none, I'll move to the council. Any comments? No comments from council. Let the record reflect that public hearing was held on this matter, and there were no objections either by written or by council or the public. Given that, we'll go ahead and close out the public hearing on this, on the plumbing code 2018. I will need a motion for the first reading of Chapter 43A adopted the aforementioned code. Clerk, go ahead and set that also upon the passage of that for the future agenda. Do I have such a motion? Moved by Menzen, seconded by Hendrickson, Henry, Hendrickson, sorry. And any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye, opposed no, motion carries. Fourth public hearing is a public hearing to hear comments and concerns related to the update on Chapter 30 related to adoption of reference, reference to the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition and provided penalties. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Acting clerk, do you receive any objections in writing?
Yep.
All right, if there's, this is the time and place for any comments or concerns or objections to this public hearing. Offer to the public first. If they would like to state any, go ahead and state your name and address, clear for the record, make your comments now, anything. Hearing none, I'll move on to the council. Any comments? Nothing from the council. I'll go ahead and close this out. Clerk, let the record reflect that public hearing was held on this matter, and there were no comments or objections. With that closed, I'll need a motion to approve the first reading of Chapter 30, adopting the aforementioned code. Moved by Saracen, seconded by Trump. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. And finally, the fifth and last public hearing. A public hearing to clerk, if you hear comments and concerns related to updating Chapter 42B related by the reference of the ICC Electrical Code 2016, or 2006 Edition with amendments to the National Electric Code 27, 2017 Edition with amendments and penalties provided. Go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the time and place for a public hearing on this. Any written objections or no, left no written objections, any comments or objections from the public? And we'll move on to council. None from council. Let the, we'll go ahead and close out the public hearing. Let the record reflect that we did hold a public hearing on this matter, and there were no objections, written or verbal. Given that, I will need a motion from the council to approve the first reading of Chapter 42B, adopting the aforementioned code.
So moved.
Moved by Shans, seconded by, well, we'll give it to Saracen. Seconded by Saracen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. And also, clerk, would you set that for the future reading? Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience in getting through those. All right, this is normally the time for the sheriff's report. I cannot tell you.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and move forward. Item number 16, mayor's report. I want to say two things this evening. First of all, I do appreciate we have supervisors here. Not that I don't appreciate everybody being here, but Brent Olson and John Harris, we'll recognize them a little bit later, for two reasons. One, we appreciate them being here. Secondly, if I was at the state of the county to which John Harris, the chair, presented, it was very well done. I hope he makes a few comments on that also. And Brent Olson was there too, I believe. I think I waved at you, I didn't get a chance to talk to you. But I attended a meeting also earlier this month with Supervisor Olson, so I've had an opportunity to speak with them several times over the last few weeks. And although overall, everything that was said at the state of Lynn County was very positive. Of course, we're 10-year recovery of a flood that affected many of our communities, but other than that, it was very positive. We appreciate them having, or having them with us, so. But we'll recognize them later, they can make their own comments. The second thing I'd like to say is just a quick, a quick, quick update on the fire department. You'll see different things on the agenda tonight, talking about land acquisition, processes and things that we're going through and working with Chief Graham on the fire department to get a new fire department built, and it's going very positive. I'm very happy with it. I know the council is. We're moving as aggressively as possible to get a new fire station built and running in the local community. I know that's a big priority with a lot of people in this community, township, and it's going very well. So I just wanna make those comments and thank everybody for their efforts. All right, I'll move on to council reports. We'll go, come on, Guy, here. Counselman Menzen.
I have sent content to Mr. Gibbons for the website. I was holding Pete Nuss and Chris Morris tonight, but I haven't heard back from him. And then I got the Auburnette student that was giving us photos. She got those today. What I see there, she got some really nice stuff. So I'll look to where we can place those. I'll get in contact with Mike Gibbons, because we've got some in the market. If that's signed up, we're not confident that's still attainable, but I'm really hoping to have some.
We're still pushing for the July 1, the road scene.
Yes. Given the complex speed addition, you're probably going to be able to, you should get, for phase one.
I have one other thing there. Counselman Menzen and Guy Trumbull and I met with contractor up in the neutral, Dalek State Development. There was a misunderstanding on sidewalks. So I did want to thank you where that meeting happened. The resolve was that they will stay as is. We're gonna work with homeowners adjacent to see what needs to be done with those. But we did walk away with the learning in that the City of Auburnette currently does not give much guidance to contractors or anyone pulling a building permit as far as what our ordinance is and regulations are. And so Guy had a takeaway in his joint role as public works and city clerk to reject the Robbins, as far as this particular contractor works with them as well, to make an overview of what setbacks needed, sidewalk elevations and those types of things. So in this case, he worked off of what was there, and the two sidewalks that are there had a variance. So it was just kind of a misunderstanding all the way around. But we did try to resolve on that, and we have next steps to do.
Good. All right, then, hearing the council reports, we'll move on to some of the comments. There are two citizen comment sessions for the City of Auburnette. The first one is items on the agenda, and we'll allow people to speak at the, for the items on the agenda, and then we'll move on to non-agenda items. We do do them back-to-back. So if you see something on the agenda that you wish to make a comment on, you may do so. You'll have up to five minutes to make your comments to council. We ask that you stay within your five minutes, and then make your comments as brief as possible, since we have a lot of folks here this evening, if you want to make your comments. And be professional and courteous as you can make those, and we'll hear those at this time. After we hear those, then I'll move on to the non-agenda items. So, items on the agenda, are there anyone that would like to make any comments on those? If so, state your name and address clearly, and you can say where you are, but you can make your comments. Agenda item comments. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to non-agenda item comments. If you, if this would be a time that would be recognized. Also, this would probably be the time where I'd like at least Supervisor Harrison, Supervisor Olson to say a few comments if they would, if they would be willing to do so. And then anyone else that would be willing to, or who wants to make a few comments, this would be the time and place to do it also for non-agenda item comments. So, I don't care what, where we're going, but at least Supervisor, if you want to go first, then we'll, we'll, the supervisor. So that we'll recognize.
I didn't give the state of the county address, and I covered a couple of things. One of the things I covered was that Lynn County Board of Supervisors isn't the only governing body in Lynn County. I know we all work together, all of the towns, all the cities, to make Lynn County a better place to live. This year, the Board of Supervisors will trim down from five to three, and the folks in Lynn County, mostly the rural folks in Lynn County, especially the folks in Auburnette, will have probably an unprecedented opportunity to choose between two well-seasoned incumbents, very hard-working people, Brent and myself. It's probably a vote where you can't make the wrong decision, so I would ask everyone here and tell your friends, make an informed decision, take a look at, at both of us, and decide which one of you would like us to represent you for the next two years. With that, I'll leave it to my colleagues.
Brent Olson, Lynn County Supervisor. Like John said, we're going to three supervisors. My district currently is Marion and then up to Central City, down to Bertram in the rural area. I've never, never went over in that particular district in Brown, Auburnette. Like John said, now we're going down to three. So the rural communities, districts, you know, we're Marion, everything else but Sierra, it's Iowa, then Robbins, and two, three, six, seven, Robbins. So, so that, I think you lose a little representation on the board, but ultimately, that's what the voters decided. So I wanted to, I'm trying to get out to the new district, new District Three, city councils, to leave you my information. We're both taking calls from all over the county with regards to roads and other issues that affect county citizens. I want to make sure you have my information. You're, we'll pass it on to your constituents if they have questions, concerns. And like John said, this, you all have a choice between both of us. I have ultimate respect for John, and we work together. Maybe the only political campaign you'll have where it's not an nasty negative campaign, both people like each other. So you'd be well-served either way, and I just wanted you to have that information.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I appreciate you all coming again and speaking. We appreciate it. All right, other comments? Yes, sir. Go ahead, state your name and address, please.
Clayton Forman.
Thank you, go ahead.
From here to talk about the proposed subject tank sewage treatment facility.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anybody has seen this, not on, not on, not on, but a letter, about what we had proposed. Says residents of Lynn County, Iowa, and the greater Midway area urge Lynn County voters for elected officials and regulatory agencies to not move the additional use pit permit for proposed subject tank sewage treatment facility to be located at 3453, 3457 Midway Road, Agueville, Iowa. This proposed, proposed facility had applied for the permit as time enterprises, El Gales, 3450 Clearwater Lane, Robbins, Iowa, which is rent by the owners. They propose things. Subject tank sewage for this, subject tank pumping business to take it to the Midway site. Liquid would be extracted and sent to Leachville at the north and west end of the property. There's the possibility that they would take subject tank material from the businesses involved. Solids would be composted in the open, close to the southwest end of the property. This proposal puts loaded truck traffic on Midway Road, which would be subject trucks as well as biomass trucks, straw, corn, beans, et cetera. This biomass would be mixed with the separated solids and then composted. Midway Road is not designed for heavy truck traffic. This project would be, would have a damage effect on property values and surrounding area. No ones live near sewage treatment facility. This will also dramatically affect the quality of life of all residents in the area. Voters and airborne particles will flow over populated urban area. Changing wind direction will allow all waters to be affected. We urge everyone to contact their county supervisor. The primary election is coming up. Vote no against the supervisor who supports this project. And we had a meeting, citizens meeting, May 29, at the maiden hall. We had 200 strong show up from that. We also had Supervisor Harris show up, and Supervisor Ben Rogers in Catalina there. This is also real close to a city park. We just got one out of there.
I'm not here with the location, I'm at this Kenny corner across.
Right, right. Cemetery, this park, wasn't his house, right on the park. He owns the houses on there. The people just don't want it. We're, so far, we're 200 strong, the one night, we're ready to show up as it holds up. You know, a lot of people say, well, what, what, or how does this affect us? What affects all of us in one way or another? We're all small communities. I know you guys probably live in my backyard.
I mean, we don't want to involve that, though.
Sure.
Why? Why, right?
Thank you for your comments. I am familiar with the project. I've been contacted on it. I believe that property actually sits in Lynn County proper. I don't think, it butts right up against the City of Robbins property, but I believe it's actually Lynn County, so. Okay, all right, thank you. Any comments from council? Okay, very good. Anyone else wishes to speak?
Can I speak on this same topic?
Go ahead, state your name, please, and your address.
My name is Shirley Laire, and I'm at 35-
Your address.
3553 County Home Road, Agueville. I'm very familiar with Auburnette. I have a 1984 graduate from here. My children graduated from here, so do my sister and my stepsister. One thing that we kind of wanted to talk about is, like Clayton said, we are over 200 strong.
Yeah, we just go it one way or the other.
I do have pictures for anyone that would be, you know, would like to see where we are proposing to have this. I did take pictures on my phone today. The biggest thing that we've got going on is we're really, really worried about health concerns as well, because there's gonna be a lot of airborne particles that are gonna be floating in the air. So with that, you're gonna have the possibility of different kinds of fungi. You're gonna be looking at possibly, you know, asthema. You're gonna be looking at people who have COPDs, people who have asthma, people who just have lung issues. It's gonna leave a lot harder. It's also the way you smell, and depending on what way the wind currents go, most likely, you might as well smell it. You do have a lot of students in the Auburnette district that rode on Midway. Does have to be one of the main roads that survives this state. At least they did when my kids were going to Auburnette, and my last one graduating at 11. So we're concerned about that as well. Plus, we do have the Ball Diamond, we do have some there. We do have the nice little park there, and it's like it's not something that anybody's really gonna ever be able to use, because it's going to smell. And it's going to cause also our property values to drop drastically. And it's like, if anything, I beg you to stay this on that. I mean, we're a bunch of little towns that work together, and I can assure you that I myself, if they were gonna do that here in Auburnette, I would be right here on your side. I would be fighting right here with you, 'cause I'm a pirate. So I, we just, we just really want to have everyone in the community, everyone in the county, to be aware of what our battle is and what's going on in Midway, so. I thank you for listening, and I do have pictures on here before my phone dies, if anybody wants to see them. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any comments from the council? Very good. Okay, anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
Harvey, Anthony, 11 Howard Street. I received from Mayor February and March financials, and I see April has been posted. Who amongst the council on questions should I be reaching out to concerning some of those, what are in those financials?
Specifically, what do you need? If you need-
There's questions on certain line items within the financials that I'm looking to have more clarification on.
Sure, and we can try to get that for you. If it's something specific, or it looks like it would exceed the five-minute mark, we'd be happy to get that for you after, or we can address something now if it's-
It's probably gonna be easier after for me to point out all the financials, exactly what I'm looking at. But I didn't know who was-
The question provide you with anything that you want of this public record, we'd be happy to give that to you.
And then my second question is, I know you published April, but are you gonna publish February and March for the rest of the season?
Let me address that. Did, did those, was that because of work interim?
I didn't realize that they were supposed to be published. I never go to the paper and look, 'cause I work here. And I asked Lori from Robbins, and she said, once we've missed them, there's no use putting them in. If you, you requested them, and we mailed them right to you. If anybody else wants those financials, I will mail them to them.
But, so, let me, let me say, if we may be able to go back or something with the web slide and do something with this, I don't know. That's something that's still being discussed, but certainly you did receive them, though.
I did receive them. I have questions on them, or who to speak to.
Okay, all right. Then we will make sure that we get that taken care of. That way we can keep business. If you're willing to do that, we can keep business going here, then. All right.
Because I'll take over more than the five minutes that I have.
Okay, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. I think between myself and Guy, we'll be able to do that. You have my email, I think, also, if not, I'll provide it to you on the website, also. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And then I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
From last month's meeting that I was at here. You guys were talking about reviews on the city employees. Who's actually doing the reviews?
I conduct the reviews for the employees.
You are conducting it only, or are you conducting it with council members?
I conduct them.
By yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
I provide it to the council members, but they're done twice a year.
Okay.
And, okay, all right, very good. Thank you. All right, any other comments from the group? Mr. Hill, yes?
Yep. Jim Hill, 147 Muthard Street.
Yes, sir.
I was wanting updates on, on the flatline markers, the handicap accessibility, hopper on Rusabel Street, safety issues of the Martin conflict, the ice skating rink.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best. You ready?
Yeah.
I actually stopped by the other day. I'm back doing my walks, and I always cut down Muthard Street so I could try to talk with you, but you weren't there. I was gonna take a look at, you offered to let me take a look at your marks out there on your house, but I think we've kind of missed each other. But I do have the printout, and I was just gonna go over with you one by one. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to do that, where we can look at them together on your property, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
It's not a problem.
Okay.
What hasn't been done, that it's gonna have to be done.
Okay, all right. As far as the, what was the second thing?
Handicap accessibility.
All right, that has been interesting. You're talking about that door right over there at City Hall.
Has anything temporarily been done to oversee this situation, such as a buzzer put on the outside that would alert somebody on the inside, somebody wanted to come in?
Right. Remind, this is a leased facility. We have worked with the owner. We have made them aware of the issues and the ADA requirements, and we are working with one for replacement. I'm gonna refer to Guy and ask him what the timeline is to get that door replaced. Again, we leased this, and it is the owner's responsibility. Go ahead.
If you notice on the way in, the new door is here, and it's gonna be installed next week. And the reason the ramp outside hasn't been done is because that would be counterproductive to try and match the ramp to the old door. So the new door's going in next week. Dan Sherman has been lined up to do the concrete. He's busting out the concrete in front of both doors, the post office back door and City Hall's front door, and he's gonna re-pour at the appropriate slope, and it should be a seamless entry into the building.
Is that wide enough?
That's a 42-inch door.
For electric wheelchair?
42-inch door. 36 is standing.
No, 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 no. They have approach. The problem with-
The approach will be well wider than the door.
For, to accommodate?
Yes, it will extend nearly a foot on either side of both of those doors, so it will be approximately, I don't have the exact measurement, seven foot wide. No, it's farther than that. It's about an eight-foot wide ramp to accommodate two doors.
I don't know, I don't-
Yeah, it will. It definitely will. It will be flat and slope.
But, yeah, we worked with the owner to try to accomplish all that. My answer on the pothole is, I have no idea, so.
Well, Rusabel.
Yeah, I, I know.
We, we have Cleesner coming to do like a 12-by-70-foot patch in that area, and that's the only reason I've allowed the pothole to go as it is, because to throw the little remaining pothole patch I have in it, to have it ground out, they keep telling me they're gonna be here, and then something delays them.
I got caught the other day, just dodged, and there was a car coming the other way. I had no choice.
Yeah, I know, it's getting bad, but I don't bear- I know, it's getting bad, but I don't bear to put loose gravel in it because that creates a whole nother issue for bicycles and et cetera because it pushes out of the hole and.
And so I thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Very good. The, and then you had some question about the.
Safety issue.
Yeah, and I know we've addressed this a couple of times. Keep in mind, the city, I think the issue that was brought up last time, we don't own that portion of it. But we will do what we can to work with them to assess. We don't.
Yep. Well, the problem is the trees to the driveway. If they would take out a couple of those trees on either side, you don't see a car coming until you get up there. Bam, that baby is there.
Right there.
And it startles you. It startles me, let's put it this way, it startles me. And you don't know if they're going to stop, you just don't, you see it just to the moment's notice. And I thought, well, hey, that'd be nice if they just take out those trees. The other issue is, why don't they have warning lights out here like they do with the soccer field? When something's going on out here, if they could turn them on, people would be aware that there's an activity out here that they have.
Sure.
They're everywhere private.
I understand that. And you are right at your five minutes, but so here, well, let me say this. Obviously, these are, these are for the record on the internet that can be on there. I will commit to this, I will pass your comments on to them. Okay, is that fair enough? All right, me personally, I'm not going to go chop them down for you, but I will pass your comments on, is that fair? How's that sound?
You've got to start somewhere with this.
There we go, all right. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to make any comments?
I will add to the pothole thing. We have been sued for potholes out there before, so you might want to really think about filling it in.
Yeah.
I think it has been today, but I haven't been out there, so.
Yeah, we've been sued and lost, so.
Yeah, it's filled.
Just to warn you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any others? Any comments, reaction from council? Very good, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item twenty. Written reports, I have, well, first one is public works. I have had an opportunity to review the public works written report, I'm sure council has also. Is there any further comments from the public works director, or any comments from council on this? We'll start with you, Guy.
Only thing I didn't add to that report because it left afterwards, the refrigerator that was here that we use for water samples occasionally belongs to the former clerkman, so that's gone now. I kind of like to buy a refrigerator that has a decent freezer compartment. Sometimes we have to freeze large blocks, several packs of ice to go with our water samples. And sometimes we need to keep water samples refrigerated, so that kind of came up after I had written my report. That's the only thing I would add. I don't anticipate, you know, the bare minimum I can get, I'll have enough room to get what I need in the freezer, so.
Any comments other than to thank you for your work on the fire station and this fire vehicle? Any comments, council, on the maintenance report?
I just have one, Guy. I do want to start with thanking you for handling both jobs. I know it's been a lot, especially with the one that getting ice and all the duties going in. On the free space that Haley dirtwork has been out there working, what's the status on that? How's everything looking? I noticed the piles are gone, but I don't know where we are at staffs wise.
Yes, the, basically, we're going to be in a holding pattern at this point. He's going to put some, just some rye seed or something on, on what he has leveled out to hold it because now's not a good time to seed grass. The fill dirt will have work done yet. He has a location to take away some of that fill that we just can't use, which will help us to get it into a tighter pile and still have plenty for the, for the fire station pad. So when he's ready to haul that out, he'll finish making a tight pile of the fill. And then basically, we wait for other things that are on the agenda to happen as far as being able to build that pad for the fire station hopefully soon. Big development this week, Bluegrass Enterprises over in two different lots now has donated us more than enough seed to seed the lawn. They have seed that they aren't using, that doesn't follow their program, that probably is slightly low on the germ aspect, but we can seed it heavy for what we're doing, so grass seed's going to be zero cost. So that, that helps a lot too.
But he's at final, I mean, that's essentially final grade, so if I were to go out and pick work, he's done.
Yeah, he'll wind up going over it again, especially if the land purchase is completed, he'll have to tie the two in, so there'll be a little bit. It's pretty close, pretty close, yep.
Any other questions? Public works. All right, we'll move on to the fire department. Again, we also have an opportunity to review the fire report for May twenty-eighteen. Fire Chief Graham is in here, and reviewed your comments on here as well, chief. It looks like you have a few good things coming up here with that shot tournament and the proceeds going to the new station. Happy about that. And I would just have a couple of comments if you'd make them on how your inspection went, I assume, a lot well.
It went a lot better than we thought it would. So we passed no problem, we got our, our paper says we can run this fire department.
Very good. Looks like you were busy this morning, too, we appreciate your, any questions on the fire report? Very good, all right, then we'll move on to twenty-one, the consent agenda. Clerk, is there any changes or modifications to the consent agenda presented?
Yes, we received a bill this morning from Red House Construction. He's currently working on the pole shed improvements that we authorized several months ago, and had to pay for a lot of the high-dollar materials that he's putting into it, so we requested payment. So that check is prepared, I'll put it with the rest, but it would be in addition to your financials, and the amount is ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
And again, to who for the record?
House Construction.
House Construction, yes. Any other changes?
Nope, the rest should be fine.
Okay. Here to that, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as of January? Move by Saracen? Sent by Trump. Any discussion? All those who favor say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries, move on to item twenty-two, the business. A is the IRWA scholarship presentation, represent Scott. Yes, you did. Very good, thank you, Scott, man, we did.
My name is Scott Shover, I represent the Iowa Rural Water Association. Each year, the Iowa Rural Water Association awards a scholarship to a child or stepchild of a IRWA member, employee, board member, council member, or mayor. It's my privilege to announce that this year's scholarship award recipient is Kylie Trimble. Kylie will be receiving a check for twenty-five hundred dollars to be used to offset the cost of tuition, books, and room and board.
Would you guys give me a handshake so I can get a picture? Thank you.
Do you want to give one with Dr. Trimble?
Would the doctor like to be on the picture?
I'm always looking for photos for the website.
Photo op, photo op.
If we can get one, that would be great.
All right. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you again for coming.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
That's great. All right, I don't think review Irish corroboration, sorry, sign, design and approval, we have the full set of that.
No, they, students are out of school for the year, and they didn't, I talked with Matt White, the teacher, and I think we need to delay once again. They have a design, but it is very, very similar to signs that are already in the school that Bannacom signs developed. They feel like they can do better, they feel like it's not a big deal to wait, we already have a sign on the edge of town, so. Matt would like to push the project into the fall, let those students continue to learn and develop and come up with a completely unique sign design. And he did say he appreciated very much the council's patience in allowing those kids to experience council meetings and to, to get a feel for the process of what it takes to get something done in city government. And he said that learning experience has been fantastic, but he wants to get us a better product. He wants us to make sure it's unique, and they used, they learned a lot in developing the sign and using Photoshop and other programs to make it, to bring it to fruition, but it's not where it should be. So unless you have objections, we'll just put this off till September, October, and let them work on it a little more.
My only thing, this isn't for us to check, but for the record, I'm happy to, I'm glad that we collaborated with the school. Have they checked with Todd Wagner to make sure that program's still open?
Yes, 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 that's been part of the conversation, absolutely.
All right, listen, I think we're going to recognize Hanson Fuller, and that's going to be for COVID, COVID group, the grant.
Do you need my address? Might have it from last month or the month before. It is only a mile from this, as a crow flies. We have to make our. Grant opening a little bigger than we originally planned on because a lot of people think we're closed. Since Jason Martin has sold, people think that we don't sell chicken, and we're not there, and we get phone calls quite often. So we are asking for a street closure for half of the day, so we can do a bags tournament, we can have Ramblin' Fever come in. And Ramblin' Fever, all of them are from Albinet, their van that's played here a few times. However, it's only three of the six that were there over there. And so we just kind of want to make some big to-do to let the whole town know we're still serving chicken and fish, and we're open and all that. So I tried to put everything on there that you need, including we would add porta potties, and we would fence off the streets, and I've asked every one of our neighbors on our street except for Creighton, where I couldn't get ahold of him, but I'm pretty sure he's, he's okay with everything. I've attached our insurance, a map, and in all the colors, it kind of shows what's going on where. Well, except, I didn't notice the blue. But when I copied it, I don't know if everybody's blue looks like my blue. Yes, it does. Okay, well, the blue is for a bags tournament in the van, so the blue kind of shows where it's going to be located. And there, it actually will not be as widespread as it looks on there, but I had to cover my faces. It'll be smaller than that, but I just wanted to go big, so I could be okay. Of course, we'll ID, wristband, pick up trash, throw it back in the proper places, post ahead of time about parking, put up signs for beauty tour. Oh, I'll be, I'll ask Guy to do it.
There you go. Proper framing.
You know I'm a stickler on special events. Was the application received thirty days?
No.
Prior to?
It's received right now.
That doesn't mean it can't be approved, that's up to council, it looks like everything else is in order, that's my only hope.
Actually, if I had more time, I was going to fill some out for Albinet Children's Benefit Day, and actually for the fire station, September eighth is when they're going to be doing something there. A bucket thing, bikers against child abuse, they want to do something in September also, so I'm going to do my best to get them all filled out right here.
You want approval, right?
Yeah, I mean, you can do a motion if you're, if you're all good with it.
Comments from council on this?
You know, I think, I think we need to do guys notify sheriffs.
Yeah, let them know ahead of time the street will be closed in case they want to come through town.
Right, and we will be on this side of the fire department. We'll always make sure of that, so they can always get in and out easy.
And you have some security lined up?
I didn't believe that we would probably need any for that night.
Don't think it's going to be that.
Because the van's over at ten, and we want the streets closed by eleven. If you guys request security, we could get security. Or y'all just show up if we put you guys in town.
If there's no other questions? I entertain a motion to approve the special event permit as submitted.
To who?
Moved by Menson. Sent by Sean. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye. Oppose, no? Motion carries, I hear a man.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item to discuss benefit day plans and other possible events. The ACDC club representative, I don't know who it is, but.
Serena Smith.
All right, very good.
I'm the secretary of ACDC for now. Actually, as you guys all changed, we did too. All officers are new, so we're kind of getting through this together, okay? We had a bio cabinet about that thick thrown at us and said, this is how you do it. Same person did it for seventeen years, that information kind of fell somewhere, I don't know where. I filled out the permit that I'm going to give to Mr. Trimble right now. Basically, the first Saturday of August every year is benefit days.
It's early this year. It's early.
Oh, it's it?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth. I'd say I would have missed it if you went correct.
We've, we've kind of kicked around some ideas that it kind of needs to change. It's always been a benefit to some child in the district, school district, that is, that needed medical or just emergency help. We haven't really had any candidates the last couple of years. The old president of the Diamond Club, which was Deb Bell, she kind of was going toward canceling Albinet Day. So all of these members showed some interest, came in, we have new officers. I don't know if any of you have noticed, but the ACDC Ball Diamond over on Naylor now has an address of two-ten Naylor. We never had an address until less than six months ago. We built a concession stand, it's doing great, it's doing great. In fact, one weekend, we had a doubleheader. We went over to the school because their concession stand wasn't open, if the one which is behind my house, behind the school, we were running both of them, made like eight hundred dollars out of concession stand. The other night, we had a game scheduled, they played a half an inning, and then it was canceled by lightning and made ninety dollars in the half of the inning. So that concession stand has repeatedly made more than the last six Albinet Diamond. I mean, we spend probably three thousand dollars on, on, on benefit days for security and band and what have you, and we make zero. So it's basically, we're coming to you, getting donations, and giving it to that child. It's not like your donations are earning more money, which is the way it used to be. So we're entertaining different ideas, and sometimes I think when somebody's been in a position a long time, I think they get burnt out, especially when they've had no help, you know, so I'm not bashing anybody or talking about anybody, I'm just saying things need to change, or... Ball, I don't know. This year, we're going to, we, we had entertained the idea of only having the benefit days until six P.M. Basically, just for kids, because that's what it's really all about. That's what all of us on the board now are concentrating on, is it's for kids. It's not a beer bash for adults. But that's important because, you know, it's for grownups too, they're the ones giving the money ultimately. So, so if you give your child fifty dollars and say, go have fun, and there's nothing for kids to do, your child has fifty dollars, this child has nothing. So we, we have to, as a town, we have to figure out what we're going to do. Every town has a festival or some type of benefit days, we need to figure out what we're going to do. We, we would like for you to advertise that there is an Albinet Community Diamond Club, and, and get people to come out and volunteer and sign up, because I can tell you that this year, the president, the secretary, the vice president, the treasurer, they want to go, they, they want somebody else to come in, new ideas. We built the concession stand, like I said, we're trying to raise money for some hard restaurants. We have gotten so much praise on, oh my gosh, you don't know how hard it was to come to these ball games, two, maybe three, or even a tournament, and not even have a drink. So we have porta potties there now, which they praise us for that, but we would like some, some hard restaurants. And, and really, we don't even have a park in the city limits of Albinet, so there's lots of space there. There's like almost four or five acres, and, and there's one ball diamond. So there's, there's room there to improve, there's room to, to put some picnic tables or some pavilions, I mean, there's a lot of room there. And we're willing to entertain anything. The budget is pretty small, because prior to the Little League concession stand, we really had no income, for lack of a better word. for lack of better words. But we're trying, that concert that got disapproved, and I know you're the stickler, because you just said you're the stickler, but we didn't know, because we always had Sharon on the Diamond Club, it always just happened, all the permits, all the, it's always just happened, that's our fault, we know that, we look back through the bylaws, we were like, "Why did we not think of that?" And then we realized Sharon always just handed us, she was a paper wood fanatic, so our bad, that was gonna raise a lot of money, um, bad taste in people's mouths, I'm getting over it, give them the breath mint, that's what I say, you know? Um, I'm asking you to let us have benefit days, we're gonna try one more time.
I'll take the branding of stickler, as long as, uh, you throw fair in there.
We didn't file a permit, we really didn't even know, um, we didn't, you know what, that's a lie, we didn't know, we just thought it was taken care of and it didn't. I'm not trying to pass the buck, but it's still a member, so we just assumed, that means you need an ass out of you and me, I know that, so that's what happened. Um, so we canceled the band, we had about five hundred dollars into it, we ate that, but going forward, we will follow the laws, and we will double check and triple check and make sure that Guy knows, and he can feed him a share. I'm here today to ask for benefit days on August fourth, and believe it or not, I've been on there eight years, nine years. So has Nancy Wheeler. So we know that everything she just went through with the whole signs, the parking, I didn't know that you had to hang it, though, I love that idea. The barricades, we would ask to close the street during the parade temporarily for that hour, we tried to change the parade route, and we got stoned. I mean, people are like, "No, you cannot," because they have parties in their yard, or it's been for years, I don't know. We were gonna go from outside of town to the football field, thought that would be easy, people said, "Not only no." So we left it alone. Like twelve noon to one forty-five, we would have to close the street. But ultimately, the, from the fire station to Second Street is closed every year, and it's just barricades. And used to, Deb always was under the impression, we had to put the little fences around everything that served here, but then after looking extensively at the codes two years ago, we realized that a barricade there and a barricade there is fencing, so you don't have to run out and put caution tape around everybody with a beer handle in your hand, as long as we're doing the bands, IVing properly, and we have security, which we have all of that.
Well, I think you certainly have, I can't get by yet, it's not with this council, but council, when it comes to benefit days, everybody seems to be well in support of that passed from the years, do you have your application?
I do.
Guy, have you reviewed the application?
No, this first, I've seen it.
Okay, 'cause I have not seen it yet either, but if you're looking for action tonight, and you'll have to review it quickly, if not, I think you'll have more than enough time to fill the thirty day window. I don't think you're gonna see a council lot of new benefit days, so, I know, I'll let everybody make their own comments, but I certainly appreciate you coming and talking to us this evening, and we'll reach out to you in the future if necessary to make sure things are done too, but, um, at least until you come up to speed, so...
Okay, I'd just like to see a lot of communication, so that we can all be on the same page, we'd like to help you.
And if you're unaware, of course, we do advertise benefit days on our current city website, and we'll certainly be on the news, now the information's from a year ago, right now, because we're gonna ready to cut, I'm doing, but, um...
I think going forward, so we're going to try to move some of it over towards the Ball Diamond, because it's less street activity, less congestion. We have a lot of space over there, as far as the kids being in the road, we have been having it at the Bus Barn, which is a school property by law that they lease, so, um, we would like to move some of the kids' games over there, we built a permanent, uh, horse shoe pit, they have a kickball tournament over there, so we'd just like to move some of it over there, because it is basically a city property, it's community property, but, um, so you'll start seeing some different permits.
Just in the interest of time, we'll go past the five minutes here, uh, does the council wish to review this and approve tonight, or review and approve prior to benefit days? I'm sure that it's gonna be approved regardless, but as long as it's in order.
I'd say we have time, I prefer to table those until next morning. Again, I don't have any doubts, but we use your facility, we were here half of the evening, we got lightning now, we have a great facility, we're supported.
We're trying.
So I'm in charge of the website, I would like to get more engagement from the community.
Okay, we're trying to get some lights out there, we actually seen that the complex, a long time ago, I don't know if anybody here knows that, but a long time ago, when that property was leased to the school for a dollar, there was, uh, some lights, as far as overhead lights, and light poles donated to put lighting out at the complex, and they didn't use some of the poles, those poles are like two thousand six hundred dollars apiece. We're trying to put lights over here, so I had a call in to the school to see if we could somehow trade maybe some railroad ties for those poles, or even some whatever
You might even call line energy, I wonder if they have a community program?
They are so backed up, they're listed so long, they said it'd be tenured, so they could get us some poles. But there literally is poles laying out there in the parking lot of the complex, that we could easily replace with something more appropriate, and, I don't know who you, how you bargain that, school guy? I was saying, where's the doctor, everybody blames the doctor, but...
So I, we do, I do have support for you, so if you need anything on the website, please let us know, even if it's an outreach for volunteers, or we'll start coordinating that, we'll go live on July first.
Thank you.
We do have another, the new secretary, and we'll get this approved pending its review.
There is a possibility we may have to set a special meeting between now and the next one that will give you the answer, we could put it on that agenda if...
We could, or, yeah, the council could waive it with the understanding we've done, we'll figure it out either way.
So what is the normal, should I, this is what June, so...
Yeah, you're well in advance, you're good, you're absolutely good, but if they're gonna consider it, they should be able to see it before the meeting, so they're not sitting here trying to review your application while they're gonna make a decision, so just...
So do I get that to you?
I guess, I probably should've told you better when I told you, "Fill this thing out," I should've told you, "Get it to me a couple days in advance," then I can put it in their packet, they can read it, and so that's my bad.
Okay.
But we're still at plenty of time, because you're so early.
I'm actually the secretary, so I'll put that in the notes, we didn't have any notes, and I took those, so I'll put that in the notes.
The application mirrors chapter forty-two of the ordinance for the Albernets, which is also on the...
All right.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, item E, which is review of Mike's liquor license permit renewal and approval, it should be in your council packets, this is a renewal, so...
Yeah, it's a renewal, insurance is in, and it's done, done deal, all it takes is your motion to approve it.
Just need a motion, so we can refile that, I know for the record, we've had no issues, right?
No.
Not filed there, so, record reflected, been no issues with Mike's part, done. On to review, I'd take a motion to approve. So move, move by Menson. Seconded by Trump, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no? Motion carries. I don't have, review the purchase of land bordering green space in possible motion. Um, I would just say a couple of words, and then I'll let the technical details be called up by, uh, Guy, and then any comments from the council. I'm gonna say this, the green space we're requiring is for the purpose of the building of the new fire department, if you're familiar with the current spaces, it's basically the space behind it, three lots behind it, so I don't wanna get into too much technical details, but just know that we are gonna be looking at approval, and I'll talk about the financing options for that in a moment, but any technical details you wanna throw out there for that?
Basically, the only reason we couldn't put it before you to actually approve the purchase is because we don't have a purchase agreement crafted yet, the both parties have signed up on, so that's why I mentioned earlier, there could be the need for a special meeting if we get that purchase agreement put into place, and it's agreed to by both parties, the sooner we do this, the sooner we can close, the sooner we can work on dirt work, et cetera, to bring it in, blend it in with the rest of what we've got, there's no other rush besides that, um, it would be cash transactions, and, uh, Mr. Naylor's not in a huge hurry, so, um, you know, it, that's what we're after, is for our own benefit to get the purchase done, be able to start moving ahead with our projects.
I think that we could probably get the motion note for the authority to do so.
Yes, I believe somebody wanted to move that, to allow the mayor to move forward with signatures on the purchase agreement and that sort of thing, so that it can be done and ready for the next meeting, that would be appropriate.
Two points of clarification, we have verbal agreement on purchase price.
Exactly. We need this purchase agreement done to move ahead, so...
Second point, are we actually buying it as three separate lots, because it's already plotted out, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, which will basically alleviate any need for a survey, uh, because it is plotted, and so it would be one price for three lots.
I, future use, should remember, not be a city property, because it's already three lots.
One issue we have to work through is it would be governed by the covenants of Naylor's first edition, so we need to, uh, have Mr. Naylor allow those covenants to be dropped, because they won't apply to what we're doing with the land, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, that's just one little thing that we have to craft out in that purchase agreement, so...
City attorney crafting that?
Yeah, well, we couldn't use our, unfortunately, couldn't use our city attorney, because he represents Mr. Naylor, so we're using a gentleman from Iowa City at the recommendation of our city attorney, but yes, he's on, so... And that's what they move on email every day.
I have to talk to Chester about this, who knows, finances and fire, uh, community funds we have. One hundred eighty-six thousand, four sixty-nine, seven-three, assigned for this particular project, the funds, we wouldn't be able to fund it, uh, from those funds, if we could get approval for up to fifty-five thousand, and give me, uh, the authority for the purchase and to sign the purchase agreement, I think that we could probably go ahead and move forward with this. Uh, again, up to the fifty-five would include the land acquisition only. Ancillary costs might pop up for surveys or something like that, we said, but this would get us moving for the acquisition of that land that's needed for the fire department. By that, I mean, where Willow comes in behind it, this would be replacement that would allow for four surveys and things like that, so you can see how important the acquisition of that land is, but...
Yes, no doubt, there will be some return costs for that, but we can't project those right now, this is just to get the acquisitions going.
Just move forward on the purchase.
I would entertain a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion, and we go ahead and allocate one fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, up to fifty-five, I don't think he's gonna come down on it, but yeah, up to fifty-five. All right, so we got a motion by Shon, seconded by Trump, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no? Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, I have a request, Steve has to leave, and can we bring the pool filling policy up to the next item?
Yes, absolutely. And thank you, council, for that, it's an important piece for the environmental projects. All right, we're gonna move on to item H, discuss swimming pool filling policy and possible motion, uh...
I just want to see a little bit, this was brought up, this has been brought up to me several times, several instances, I've looked, I have no sort of policy done, but I talked to Steve, he said to do it all the time for a donated, which is great. I recommend people don't go personally, but I think we should discuss this as a council, it's something we want to continue to do, if we're going to, should put this in writing.
Clarify, nearly full, strong.
Oh, clarify, thanks.
It's actually cheaper to fill a very close.
Why are we, why are we using municipal facilities to do that?
People ask, could it fill faster? I don't recommend it, because it makes your pool rusty. But we have in the past done it for, and I can just ask for an exclamation, water, end of it, you're at what, forty, fifty bucks, you figure it out.
Okay, I, let me say a couple things about this, I'm not gonna say other cities don't do it, uh, I'm also gonna say, I don't think that this has come up during my time, I've only been on council, or as mayor for about two and a half years, and I don't think I've heard of this before, but, uh, if it's, um, if it's in past practice, I'd like to say I'm ignorant of it, but, um, I guess, it's non-metered water, right? I mean, you require it somewhere, they get there, put it in form or something like that. I get it about that much, that it's a service to the citizens of Albernets, but I'm only about that much.
It is a donation to the fire department, if you wanna look, take, you know, jump on the other side of the issue, they are getting a donation out of the service, so that's where the rub comes, you know, yes, the city's not getting reimbursed for their water, but the fire department, which is under our control, is getting a donation, they're not doing it for free, so...
I'll say this, some will argue they're using taxpayers' equipment, resources to fill the swimming pool, I myself have a swimming pool, I filled a garden hose with the service department.
I filled my own with garden hose, too.
I would not, I don't think it's a good use of public property.
I guarantee you, every town does it.
I agree, and more to stop, you like to give a donation to somebody that runs the skid steer in my yard, and there's buildings and community facilities, I don't think we can do that very hard.
I can make it a fundraiser for formed pools.
From a perception of an individual citizen, um, that's a mighty expensive equipment, to build a pool.
It's also great to run the pump, and everything else.
Yeah, all right, well, it sounds like the temperament of the council here is that it, there is no support of it unless the council wants to put a policy in place that regulates it, you know? There's a motion that wants to do that, I'm happy to hear it, if not, practice stops?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we do write up some sort of policy, that we do not fill some, but we do not use public property equipment to fill some.
Obviously, I'll say a motion back, but unless we put policy together for a motion, otherwise it just ends.
Okay.
All right, no more filling pools. Fair enough, fair enough, all right, that's taken care of, any other comments on that? Very good, then we'll get back.
Was there a second on the motion?
Well, I think the motion was gonna be if they wanted a policy to implement one, I think we can handle it, just the way we did, no more filling pools, so... Um, let's just go to G then, review of variance request at four oh five North Main Avenue, and motion to approve resolution zero six forty-eighteen zero one, Guy, can you go ahead and refile that, please?
Uh, Craig, Craig, who is here, came to visit with me about his plans to make his, uh, lower level of his barns on his property into a living area, Brahima's wife, and we discussed at length, water and sewer hookups, and spent a lot of time trying to figure out the best possible, uh, scenario, uh, we figured out a solution, yeah. Figured out the best possible solution for the water, which was not difficult, um, sewer became more of a problem as we, uh, looked at every area to get him hooked up to city sewer, it was becoming impossible to do, um, we'd either have to cross, um, other people's property, which Craig was willing to bore, as to not disturb, but he'd still have to have easements, et cetera, et cetera, um, the only logical solution to get in sewer would be for him to vary a line through his property to Main Avenue, out in front of his house, and that sewer is approximately sixteen feet, or twelve feet deep in that area, and so we would have to cut out an enormous patch of our freshly overlaid street in order to get to the sewer line, um, that's where I wanted to end the conversation, Craig already had a plan to put a septic system in, and was gonna go that route before he found out, we have an ordinance that says, if he own, in city limits, if you own property that is within one hundred feet of the city sewer line, you must connect to the city sewer, uh, unless circumstances allow, and that's why the variance is being asked for, so...
One question, just on the back of the industry a little bit, this has come to council before, right, to even approve using artists and residents, anyway?
Yeah, we've talked about...
I know, so, yeah, as well as, and so, what's, just remind me about the water meter situation, is there, that each resident has its own?
At this point, no, each resident does not have its own water, he's connected to his house from his main house at this point, if he takes up residence in that, we will have to meter that barn, so...
And we have a separate line.
It's a separate line.
With the separate valving and things, out by the street, so at the time that, if we get everything approved and construction begins, it'll be an area where we'll have a meter, and then we'll begin, when we begin using the water, that it'll be metered beyond the city rolls.
Yeah, that part's all correct, it's just, it's just... It's just, it's just stubbed in and waiting for him to finish his remodel to hook the meter in, yes. So, now it's time to look.
Guy and I actually started on this three years ago.
Yeah.
I remember this case.
Yeah, and, and we did the boring, and we got everything set, and then we came to a point where, okay, we're ready to either hook in sewer or do the septic system, and as we evaluated all the options out there, we just came out that that was, could be the logical first choice, and we're asking for the variance to be able to move forward.
The, I spoke with county sanitarian, who would be, is the controlling factor on septic systems. He approves everything, except he's the one that kind of warned us about the check deeper in your ordinance. There's a, there's a county ordinance that says if the building is more than two hundred and fifty feet away from sewer, you don't have to connect, but he's the one to say you need to look deeper because there's this rule, a lot of cities have the rule about the hundred feet, property being within a hundred feet. And we have that in our ordinance, and that's what's listed in the resolution that's in front of you. For us, for the city, I know Craig and whatever crew he would hire would do a great job of installing that line, but that's still asking for trouble with our street to have to dig out that big of a patch. You know what it's like with a twelve-foot deep trench? That's going to take a big enough hole for a large trench box, et cetera, et cetera.
Not only that, it's a lot of footage.
And...
There'd be future sewer problems.
And I think he would have to pump, because I don't think there's enough fall. And that's another thing that creates issues, too. If he's pumping sewage into our line, does that create pressure problems at times, et cetera, et cetera? So, I'm just not a fan of him connecting to our sewer, to be honest with you. And he has plenty of property, too, is, is the other thing, you know?
Good question. Now, there, there's no hull left to this filter bed, right?
Because of filter bed? No, there would be no office.
No office, but just make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah.
Right.
So, there's no chance of poisoning or doing any damage to the neighborhood.
Right.
Absolutely, that's true.
And the resolution states that if there's ever a problem with that septic system and/or there's a property change, this has to be revisited. You know, if, if you sell it or your estate sells it, this has to be revisited. It either has to be renewed for them, or something has, different has to be done.
I have two more questions. So, the house on the property remains on sewer, that's clear.
Yeah.
So, this is just for, for the additions?
Right, right.
Question number two, Guy, this might be more of a technicality as far as filling. Do we still build the sewer charge? Because I didn't see that in the variance.
No, there's, there's two or three properties in town that have their own septic system for various reasons, and there, we have a separate water-only charge for those scenarios. When he gets finished with his remodel and gets moved in there, and we put the water meter in, we'll address it with that.
Okay, I saw it clear.
Didn't we talk about something like this about five years ago or something?
Three years ago.
Okay. Maybe there were orders in that.
Yeah. And we had talked about it.
Well, and I tried to find it, but I couldn't. The house that Craig's daughter lives in is down by the tracks on Burnett State Yard North Street, and that's another perfect example where a variance was granted because the sewer is shallow in that area, and there was no fall to reach it, and we can't cross the railroad tracks to go into our small lift station. So, that property was given a variance for basically the same reason. It has a septic, septic system and has built water. There's precedence, I just couldn't dig it up. I had too much going on.
Any questions from council on this? A motion, if you want to pass the resolution.
I want to read the resolution, zero six one fifteen zero one.
Motion by Sarah, seconded by Trump. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Alright, then we'll move on to, alright, move on to item I, discuss crack seal, see if there's a possible motion, Guy.
We got a, a cruiser was in town looking at the patch that needs to be done in Roosevelt. Drove around town, asked if I wanted, if I wanted a bid on crack seal, which we haven't done in four years. And he basically, after I said, yeah, give me a bid, he drove around and he measured any cracks that didn't have crack seal in them, and he also measured any cracks that it was in bad shape. Not everywhere in town. He left streets alone that were mostly good, just the areas that appeared to need it the worst. Came up with that estimate. I did check another couple outfits. They're right in the, right in the exact, within two or three cents per foot price on the, and we don't have to really get competitive quotes on that. It's a repair, street repair, and it's under the allotted amount of money. But, it, it's something that we probably should do. It'll save our concrete, keep the water out, they blow it, and put the crack seal material in.
I was told crack ceilings have seven years to tie. Whether that's true, I don't know.
And this city's got a good history of doing it. We've done it.
He's the guy that's gone in the past.
Yes, and he's the guy that's done in the past, and it's kind of consistent, and I just did a double check on him to make sure their price was in mind, and so, within a few cents, three or four cents, either way, the other outfits that I called, so, one, one more and one less, so...
How's our budget enter in that next year's, that way?
It would be in, yeah, next, next year's street fund.
Any other questions from council? No other questions, and I entertain a motion to approve thirteen thousand six ninety-one seventy, a good loser for the, the C.
Move.
Move by Benson, seconded by Emerson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Take care of that.
Will do.
Jay, discuss generator maintenance and contracts.
Uh, we got a, the new, we've had a three-year generator maintenance bid with Altor for Caterpillar. Those three years have passed already. Doesn't seem like it's been that quickly, but I feel like they've done a good job. Their price is up to the tune total over three years of two hundred and twenty dollars. I don't feel the need to go get, you know, the, the whole thing is a thousand dollars, you know, for three years worth of generator maintenance. I don't feel it's worth my time to go get any competitive bids. I think they're doing a good job. So, I guess I would ask if you're willing to just let me renew that generator maintenance contract. They know the machines, and it's been the same guy coming every year. That's worth something to... Yeah, they absolutely, we worked through those issues at the fire station the first year that they did it. That generator hadn't run in a couple years.
Only has insurance on it.
Exactly, and they've been running flawlessly. There has not been any failures. They've been, you know, one battery issue on the lift station one, which is unforeseeable, and other than that, they've been running perfectly.
Well, it says here that the agreement is on rank renewed, and a three-day notice for the party. They must decide to raise, raise their rate so they want to renew it.
Yeah. Yep. No. That's, it was anywhere from ninety to forty to ninety dollars per unit, depending on the size of what they, adds up to two, my notes here somewhere, two hundred.
Except, all done with the maintenance on the generator. Motion by Sean, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, we're up to item K, discuss, says a planning and zoning and board of adjustments. This item I asked to be, under the current code, there are two chapters, chapter fifty-three, which is under the Board of Commissions, Planning and Zoning Commission is specified in our ordinances, and then chapter fifty-four was reserved. Fifty-four was probably, I'm guessing, I wasn't sure, many, many, many years ago, when he put it together, but I'm guessing was probably for the board of adjustments. Probably have folks that can tell us a little bit more about it than you do. But, with the board of adjustments and with planning and zoning, reviewing the membership, we've had folks that have either moved on, or we don't have a full five on each one. I would like to get that taken into account, where we get five active members on each one of the boards. So, with fifty-four being reserved, I'd like to also get a ordinance in there that not mirrors, but designates some of the same rules that are in place with chapter fifty-three, term limit, five-year term limits, or auto-renewing limits, or whatever it's going to be, but something that basically just keeps us on top of it, so we don't run into a position again where we have, you know, members that move out of town or something like that. So, that when we need to draw upon either the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Adjustments or something like that, we have current members in town that are up to speed with what we need, and we don't run into that situation again, so, that's basically what it is. I'm not asking for any motions or moving on this tonight. I just did present some language for chapter fifty-four, which I'd like the council to take a look at, and if it looks like something that you have an interest in, then we'll look forward to our legal and have them take a look at it. If it's something where you just want to leave it reserved from the way it is, at a fair minimum, I would ask that we bring those boards up to five members each, and at least give that function up on four memberships. That's my comments on that in the opening of the discussion.
I like to write up the, I didn't, I think it's good to put in writing, especially the powers section, what they're responsible for, no question as far as who governs what. Board of adjustments that you provided, clearly states that their decision comes to council as an entity, it needs to be written, so I would agree with moving forward.
Love it, coming. Is anyone opposed to trying to do a fifty-four with some basic rules to a board of adjustments?
That was a separate paper that I put out for you. I didn't have it in the original map, but I threw out a couple early.
But, we don't have his write-up.
Yeah, not for fifty-four. Fifty-four is just blank, so, we're not there yet.
I emailed that. I emailed that. Probably, I don't know.
Yeah, I forgot, I should have printed that out. That's my fault, I'm sorry.
Well, I wasn't seeking any action.
Yeah.
I would just want to make folks aware, and see if there was any interest of even doing formalized rules to it.
I think it's good, yeah. Formally, maybe it's worth it.
Does anyone oppose to adding fifty-four to it? Alright, we'll get that on to legal and see what they think of it, and then if we, if it's something they're interested in, then we'll take it forward, and then the process of adding it as an ordinance, and then we'll see what the public thinks. Sounds good, Guy? You take care of that.
Bye.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, what's your recommendation for bringing up members upstate? I know it's by appointment, so how do we turn interest?
Well...
If you wanted to be someone who's interested, we could just throw these out, say, hey, you're in.
Do we have members here currently? Is that the process of how the current members are?
I don't know, because most of them are...
I was, I was asked by council members.
Okay, so they solicited your membership? Okay. Alright, so...
They asked around, who else do you think might get?
I don't know.
And I don't know how often we're called upon either, but the last time...
I've been on the board eight years, and I think I've done two.
Okay, alright, so...
And I, and if I have a term, I didn't know I had a term on that.
Well, there isn't for, there isn't for adjustments. There only is for the, in chapter fifty-three, for the planning and zoning. What we'd like to do, most cities split it between the two boards, and they have two different policies, but they kind of mirror each other on five-year terms, and then they, some of them just auto-renew. But, at least by having it marked with the city, at least we know to go back to the people every five years and say, hey, are you still living here? Do you still want to do it? Are you up to it? Because without notifying or saying up with people, look what we did tonight with changes to the ordinances and information and code, members need to know that. They need to be provided that, so they can stay up on what's going on. You know, we're asking people to review stuff that we're not keeping them informed on, so that's just what brought it in. Alright, very good. So, we'll, we'll go through that, too, of the process, you know, reach out to a few folks, and if they're willing to do it, you know, some folks may not even want to do it, so... Alright, item L, oh, sorry, was there a...
I still don't have it.
Oh, okay. Item L, review skid loader bids and possible motion, that's also...
Last meeting, we talked about seeking some lease quotes, more along the lines of short-term, we're definitely going to turn the machine in when we're done. Basically, that was, there, each company had either nothing, or Deere probably only had the only actual plan that fit, I think, what we discussed. That information's all in your packet. What it boils down to is, do we want to go with some sort of lease like that, or do we want to just purchase the machine? Deere's deal is basically, they've got two prices, monthly, the six twenty-three and six twenty-seven per month for a three-year lease, and we're going to wind up paying six thousand, or, excuse me, twenty-two thousand and some odd dollars for each one of those over three years period, and then we have the opportunity to buy the skid loader at that point at their fixed price. I don't know if that's the option for us. Bobcat's deal that I think Brian was from, or Councilman Benson was familiar with from his work, we would have to buy that machine now. We would have to buy the Bobcat, pay the full price for it, you know, sell our, our machine, you know, that's how much we'd have invested now. What their program is, he would, if we say under two hundred dollars a year, he would be willing to trade us for a new machine every year for seventy-two hundred dollars. That's six hundred dollars a month. So, essentially, it's the same. The only thing that we would, would catch us there is if Bobcat came out with a brand-new model that was super duper, and then the base price was five or ten thousand dollars more, we'd be at decision time at that moment, because then that seventy-two hundred dollars is not going to trade it. The problem with that, I think, is we are not hard enough on equipment to need a new skid loader every year.
How many hours about do you lose a year?
The, under two hundred. That's why the two hundred thing, the two hundred hour is probably about a hundred and twenty-five or thirty is all. There's nine hundred hours on it, and it's an eleven, eleven we've got. And I anticipate using it a little bit more, but seven years, nine hundred hours, so, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty hours a year. So, I guess my recommendation after doing this research would be to buy a machine. The only other wrinkle that came up, I still maintain that I like the Volvo the best, and it is actually the cheapest unit of the ones that we have looked at, but he cannot give me a machine till September, which is not the end of the, of the world. You know, that's the only thing that changed in this scenario. It was, he was supposed to have one on the ground in July, and he got informed that it's not going to be till, till September. That being said, if that was the choice we made, we're going to put a few more hours on our skid loader, but it's not going to be that much. It's not going to affect what we can ask for to sell it, because I believe that was your decision, you wanted to sell our machine outright, so, I guess...
Parts for it. If we can't get them, and if it breaks down, we wait three months.
I've been assured, no, I've been assured. It's just, yeah, it's just a manufacturing issue. They're, they're actually have gotten popular to the point where they're having a little trouble keeping up, which is a good thing. That means there's a lot of people out there buying them. The only other concern with that Volvo is it's not as prevalent as a deer or a Bobcat as far as resale value down the road, but that's anybody, that's crystal ball area there. How do you, how do you really know? Of course, the Volvo salesman assures me it will be worth, you know, but so is the deer salesman, and so is the Bobcat salesman.
Trust me.
Yeah, trust me, exactly. So, I do, John and I discussed it again today, the safety aspects of the Volvo, plus the fact that we're buying it nearly twenty-five hundred dollars cheaper than the other competitors, I'd say is worth taking a chance on. I guess that would be my recommendation if we're going to move ahead, would be to buy the Volvo.
I am going to be candid and just say, I just don't know if we have the need for a track machine. I mean, I really don't. And the machine we've got, there's really nothing wrong with it. It's a solid machine, three emissions, all the garbage that comes along with that, but you did say his, his Volvo is small enough, it wouldn't have any emission stuff either.
Yeah.
But, then doesn't have the load we need for, if it takes around the shop.
Yeah, the machine we have is a seventy-two horse, so is the Volvo. The other, the deer and the, and the Bobcat are seventy-four horsepower, so two horsepower off, you're not even going to notice that. This whole conversation...
So, there's weight from the back into the front?
Yeah, no, they're rated, they're, they're all, I've gone through all the specs and all the ratings. It's definitely a big enough machine. It's got a better breakout force than the Bobcat does. The machine weight is exactly the same as the... The machine weight is exactly the same as the Deere, essentially, the overall machine weight. I have no doubt it will do everything that we ask it to do.
I just think for our regular use of the snow, Volvo, and things like working at the brush pile, not working with the machine, to see if it's on, I'm just thinking, can't put that.
Yep.
Buckets down there, everything, equipment the way I know.
Yes.
Energy.
Yes. Yep. And there, and Councilman Saracen is right, our machine is, there's nothing wrong with it, and we continue to own it, we just run the risk of it getting to be 10, 11, 12-years-old at the end. Even if it is still relatively low hours, the value drops, because Deere comes out with a new model, that makes that, this model decline in value. You know, we talked about, do we need to be on plan to update our equipment and keep it? Yes, there's nothing wrong with it, you know, totally agree. It's fine, there's no broken-down parts. Just bins, do you want to let it get older? That's, that's the question. And as far as the tracks go, I don't, no, I can't tell you how many times I wish I was on tracks, trying to get things done that I couldn't get done, from being, rotation in wet areas, and Kevin at Walker has a track machine, and he pushes snow with it, two winters in a row now, and loves it. Would not go to a real lower, lower-
I talked to you about the track tire difference, but at least, my thing about the, I'm with you, do we really need a track machine? But when you're only putting $900 on in seven years, you're not going to worry about that track still okay.
How much damage?
We can damage a tire too.
My, my bigger concern is, I don't have experience, but we talked about that.
Yeah, I, we were dealing with the cat on tracks during that last heavy snow, and I didn't, you know, I, I came telling you about how I ran out of power, so that tells me that traction was not an issue, because if I was losing traction, I wouldn't have run out of power. I could snuff that track, that loader out, pushing that heavy snow, because it was gripping and doing it. And I spec all of these with the Z-track on them, not the traditional C-channel track that they call it, and that is night and day difference in the snow. It also leaves a, less damage in a grassy or dirt area, because it's not as aggressive of a tread in that circumstance. If we were running around in pure mud, like in a real, true construction zone, I would want the C-channel, if that was the case, but for our, the reason I want tracks is for finish grading, and for pushing the snow, and that Z-track is the appropriate for those two jobs.
What's your recommendation?
The Volvo. To buy and purchase the Volvo. That machine with the tooth bucket to be in addition to the other buckets and attachments that we have would be $47,625. Purchase price of the Caterpillar, I'm not even interested in. Purchase price of the Deere is $50,099.69, with the tooth bucket and the Z-tracks. And the Bobcat is, $53,741.
Guy, do you need, do you need a decision on this tonight, since you did say they can't get one until September?
Yeah, the, the only thing that will change would be the Bobcat bid, because he's bidding on a machine he actually has on the, on the line. So, that would change if we revisited it. The Deere is a machine that he basically has on order, he has a basic machine on order waiting to decide if we're going to have it, and then we'll put the specs to it at that point. And so, yeah, no, we don't have to. It was, however it was, no, it's in the budget for next fiscal year, yes, so we've got to think about what side we're on.
Do you want to have counsel on this?
I'm okay with purchasing the Volvo, because you're looking, the lease deal is different from your-
I need that total again, Mr. 47, 625.
625.
What's our best guess, nobody can get out of a Volvo?
The, the trade-in values that we were given were anywhere from $18,000 to $24,500 from these dealers, so that's why we chose, we feel like we can get advertised near 30 and probably get 26 to 27 for that machine pretty easily, especially when people know it's usually municipal-owned machine, that generally helps them.
And it doesn't have the garbage. That's big.
Yeah, what? The emissions-
The garbage emission. They're not-
Yep.
Okay, then, this, by right, the Volvo is the $18,000 for the Deere, 326D skid loader, skid steer?
Yeah, that's, that's their, that was their trade, but if we don't trade, that number is a moot point.
But that's our property that we're going to be trading?
No, we're talking about selling ours outright and not doing a trade.
Oh, that's what they would give us?
That's what they would give us if we say, yes, we're going to trade it.
Okay, so the 47, 625 is not doing the trade?
Is not doing the trade.
And that is the preferred method that you're-
Yes, I think everybody was of the consensus that we're going to sell the old one and purchase a new one outright, sell it.
623, so.
Yeah, basically. Right, and we, and we budgeted for $25,000 to do this trade.
So we'll trade, and this, you're looking to sell that separately, out of your deals, or whatever it is that you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, there's multiple options we can do. I need to check the legality of where we can advertise. I think we can advertise anywhere, as long as we advertise uniformly, so everyone has a chance at it.
Does it sound like you were leaning towards the motion, or was that your intent to buy it outright? No city trade, or disposal of city property with it?
Yeah, I would definitely not trade the machine, I would sell it.
Other discussion on that? Home Works Directors, recommendations for the Volvo, $47,625. Motioning or table?
I'll make motion, we purchase the 2000 Volvo MCT 110D track skid loader, with the intent of selling our current 8.6D skid loader.
And the $47,625?
For it started at $7,000.
There's a motion by Vincent, second by Trump. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say hi?
Hi.
Oppose, no? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. For the record, no, I'm sorry. The others are all ayes. And, the motion does carry, by the way. And then, also making notes that you'll move on the disposal of the other equipment, and keep this informed on that prior to its sale. All right. Item N, updated on hiring process for city clerk, I'm going to keep this brief, we are among council meetings as it is. We are in our third iteration of hiring, the first two attempts, real close on the first one, second one, we actually hired her, but her, I think, I believe it went that her current employer wanted her more than we did, so good for her, but bad for us. But anyway, the position is posted until filled now, and we are looking to do that as early as next week, so it's going well. I just want to say that, I'm sorry that it's taken so long, but we like to do things right then by Friday, so we're not going to hurry the process, we're going to make sure it's done right, and I want to thank the Hiring Committee for their, for their work on that. I see our deputy sheriff has arrived. So, no other comments from me on that, I'll get other comments in a moment. Thank you, sir, for coming. Full booking, recognize, I'm going to share with our report.
Required 43, including 76.1. It's like 25 closures.
Counsel, go ahead and review that. I would say, you're lucky, we don't usually go this long. You would have been, you would have been hitting the locked door if it would have been one of our normal council meetings. Certainly, I appreciate you coming, and, and all that you do for us. We'll take a quick look at this, counsel. Do you have any questions for Lynn County Sheriff, or any concerns here in town? I don't think I have any, counsel. Very good, thank you, sir.
Thanks, thank you for getting me in.
We appreciate it. All right, other comments based upon the city clerk update? Very good, thank you, I hope I have good news for you by now. All right, Item N, discuss council committees and possible changes, this is something that I've brought up since getting into office in January, I will go ahead and present this, I'm hoping for action tonight to be done with this, in your brief for this site. I've listed the previous committees that were listed, or that are, was done by previous council, I've sent on these committees myself. What I would like to do, as you can see, I'll go ahead and read them for the record, besides the mayor here, as myself, that does, a question came up earlier about supervising employees, that's actually in the city ordinance, by, as a function of the mayor, that's why I have that, as a mayor, myself listed there, and that's why I mentioned it earlier. For outreach administration of EMA, I have Councilman Saracen, she is already doing much of that, excellent work on her website, takes up that as well as working on the EMA. And then, of course, Councilman Sean's doing finance, has done it for many, many years, playing a key in that capacity. With Councilman Henderson taking on public safety, for us, that is, of course, the fire department, as well as issues in town related to public safety. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Vincent has specifically asked us to take that on, I think he has a lot of ideas about what we can see done in the city and the future growth of the city. Public Works, Councilman Trump, because much of this, right now, anyway, with working with Guy, and we're seeing a lot of our projects being available for daily questions and items that way. So, I would like to see the previous committees done, and these put in place to let us individual council people focus on these areas, and then also as a resource for the other council people. So, if you have a particular reason, or a particular issue, you go to these council people and have them assist or take care of it for you. This is just my idea as we continue to do some of our bigger projects. These goals that we put together are much easier to maintain and do if we have our specific areas that are working with. I don't try to interfere or micromanage the things that you're doing in EMA or the website, or what you and Congress, Parks and Recreation, would happen with Public Works, or certainly Public Safety, we need somebody that is going to assist. Anyway, those are my comments. I would see a motion that would efficiently put these into place. And when I'm done, you can change them all again. If there's no flavor for it, then we probably need to go back to the, these other committees and get people assigned, because they're out of, they're out of bats and things. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Are you seeking a motion?
I would like one, so you can gentleman.
I would like my motion that we accept. Do we need selection?
Motion by Vincent, second by Trump, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say hi?
Hi.
Oppose, no? Thank you, and I appreciate that, I think it sends a clear message of cohesion of our council. All right, Item, oh, discussion employee harassment training, this, I believe, item N, Councilman Saracen, human fear, can this be?
It is, but actually, I was going to defer to you, you mentioned this during downtime of our interviews, that we could resource share on some of the flavors of training possibly.
That's correct. I think I mentioned this once before, I attend a meeting of mayors that we do on a monthly basis, we discuss a number of things, including issues and trends and things like that, including policy. A couple months ago, one of them came up where each individual city was going through sexual harassment training, I personally sat through a block before the City of City Director, as an example. Anyway, as we were talking about this, some of these smaller city mayors had talked about doing a collective effort to reduce costs, and it was brought to the attention, I believe, by, I can't remember if it was Chuck Henson or not, it was either the mayor and Robin for the mayor in Tewa, I don't remember. Anyway, but they said that they had put something together, and it may be cheaper as we do some of this mandatory training and stuff like that. And I said that we would probably be interested in getting into that. I apologize that I don't have the information, because the mayor's meeting got canceled for last month, and we don't meet again till the end of this month, so I'm going to have to table it until I get the information against this month, because it was canceled, there were too many state conflicts with the mayor. In fact, Supervisor Harris here is also attends the meetings as the supervisor, just got an interesting note.
I know, I just thought of this, is this something that legal city possibly does for, you know?
I don't know.
Could be, I'd love to dive into that, I know they offer a ton of stuff, but, you know-
You know, I think it kind of rotates on everything, on mandatory training things, so that they kind of sweat out, you know, when I first came on council, we were doing our, you know, the-
Oh, the-
The EMAs, the-
Yes. NIM training and stuff?
NIM, yeah, the NIM training and stuff like that, so we kind of rotate something each year, you know, that we look at or focus on or get done, so I think that's the particular one that we do this year, but I will make sure I get an update on that and get it out there soon.
I think the primary thing to those meetings to say is a priority, and obviously more so for, also, when we get a clerk hired, so I think next month's time, we have both employees on board.
Sure, I'd like to get everybody doing it together.
Yeah, and it is a priority that the city has some kind of current training.
Definitely get it addressed. Other comments on that? All right, very good. We're almost done, folks. Item P, discuss employer reviews, compensation, and possible motion. The employer reviews are done two times a year, the annual one is done in June. I have completed the employer review for, we only have one employer right now, and that's for Guy, it is completed, it is on the form that we brought to council previously, the updated form, and it has been submitted to Guy for his review. Employees are, employee reviews are a two-way street, so I've got it done, he has reviewed it, he has no issue with it, I will submit it to each of you for your review, and we just need to get it completed before the end of the year. So, once that's done, and you all have a chance to look at it, and so, I just wanted to let you know that it will be done before the end of the year. And that is it.
Oh, we want to discuss additional compensation from him, taking the clerk position.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Given that we have went so long in hiring a new clerk, I think it is only in order that perhaps we should look at a plus rating for Guy. I know, and where I work, if you take on additional duties, especially for an extended period of time, ours is either over 30 or 60 days, if you take over 30 days maybe, then you do get a plus rating. I calculated what a 5% and a 10% plus rating would look like. A 5% plus rating for Guy right now would be $1.05 increase per hour, and a 10% would be $2.10 increase per hour. I know you've been up here awfully late plenty of times putting stuff together, and that we're asking you to do double what you normally do, and you've not asked for or complained a bit about it, but I know also it was never our intent to go in June to, before hiring another city clerk, so I apologize for that. But, if this is something that the council wants to recommend, or that the council wants to approve, we can certainly look at it, frustrating up until the point that a new clerk is hired.
Has there been any discussion about, knowing the council members about people's directorial, if they want their due or something?
Well, when we first talked about hiring a new clerk, the process that we had laid out as far as the council hiring committee, was it probably take somewhere in between 90 and 120 days? So, if things went well, and it looks like they were, things were going well at the beginning, I mean, we attempted to hire our first, in our first process, we attempted to hire the clerk, we would have been done in probably around April for this, so if you want to look at something retroactive, we can certainly do that as well. Council has power, or whatever we want to, as far as financial action.
I just have to say, Guy has got us through a lot, he's got development happening for the new area now, learned a lot, and found things that need to be fixed, and all the problems as well, and I'm sorry that it's 40% plus rating, retroactive to the first.
Just again, for the record, 10% increase is $2.10 in addition to your current wages, it would be guns. Basically, in what we call no business, no personal action, as a temporary increase only up until the point that a city clerk will be hired. What about retroactivity? Yeah, April first. Any other discussion on that?
What's up with your area?
It's now.
That already, girl. Did you make a motion?
I did not, I was just hoping to, to discuss, so I'm happy.
Have been, get this straight, it's for a personal action, which I support this, by the way, you know, not voting, a personal action for a ten percent increase, two dollars and ten cents, retroactive to April first. April first, okay. Do you think a motion would be there?
I will, I give Guy, I just go on a ten percent, two dollars, ten cent increase, is our range, retroactive to April first, as additional for this.
There's a motion.
I'll just fill the point, and you can decide.
A motion is made, Sarrazin, second by Trump. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, thank you for everything you're doing for us, we appreciate it, well deserved.
Thank you for understanding my shortcomings to, like, attempts to do this.
That's all right, we're all getting there. And again, I keep telling, I keep telling the Robbins mayor, as soon as we get our clerk hired, the next meeting, I will be there to officially thank you and your clerks for coming over to help us. And I think he's starting to think that, I forgot about it, but we're still getting there, but you know what, we're doing, we're doing pretty good. All right, item twenty-three, I take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Menzam.
Second.
Second by Trump, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, motion carries, thank you all for the meeting, I know.